All right, I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. My name is Barbara Gosh. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters in the Rochester metro area. And we're a nonpartisan membership organization that tries to help people be well-informed and engaged voters. That's our main task in life. So we're very fortunate. We have almost all of the candidates for city council, which is a lot. And we're going to be able to hear from them tonight. So thank you all for being present. We are recording this. This webinar and it will be posted to our YouTube. Closed captions are available. You can click on them on the bottom of your Zoom panel. All right. And with that, I would like to ask Karen Morris to come on. Karen is going to be the moderator for tonight, and so she'll be running the show.
Great. Good evening, all. Thank you for joining us. This is the debate among the candidates for city council. There are five seats that are open, 13 candidates who are running, 12 of whom will be with us this evening. And that's five of the nine seats on city council that are open. They are the at-large seats. We will have several rounds of questioning tonight. We solicited questions from you before this evening, and we thank those who submitted questions. And we use that input in creating questions that the candidates will address tonight. So we will have opening statements, probably three rounds of questions, and then closing statements. The plan is for an hour and a half program. So with that, I will introduce the various candidates. I'm just going to mention their name and which time they will come on the screen. And then we'll do the first round of introductions, each having a minute and a half. So our first candidate is Louis Aponte. And next is Kelly Cheadle. Niner Davis. And Clifford Florence Jr. Okay, Mitch Gruber. LaShonda Leslie Smith. Josie McClary. And Miguel Melendez. Victor Sanchez. Miguel Powell. And Kevin Stewart. Great. Welcome all. So we each has a minute and a half. We'll go in alphabetical order, starting with the at the top for this round of questioning, or for this round. And again, the round is tell us a bit about yourself, why you're running, why you're a great candidate for city council. We'll start with Louis Aponte.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Louis Aponte. I'm 57-year-old father of five children and eight grandchildren. I've been married for 105 years in county. I was born and raised in the North Clinton Avenue neighborhood. I bought my home in April 24th of 1998 in the northwest side of the city and still reside there. All of my children are graduates of the City School District, with three of my sons being honor roll, honor roll students and members of the National Honor Society. My youngest graduates in two weeks from school to the arts. After high school, I worked at Kodak and then started my career in EMS and National Ambulance in 1989. I made helping strangers my livelihood for over three decades, serving the city of Rochester Monroe County. My last year, I provided COVID vaccinations for bedridden patients across the county. I retired my New York State paramedic certificate on my son's birthday on November 1st of 22. In my career, I responded to over 45,000 calls in our community. I have been chair of Josanna Neighborhood Association since 2007, and helped create the city's first development master plan that was led by a neighborhood. I sit on boards for Charles Sutman House, Community Place, Do the Right Thing, and I'm former president of Sector 3. The community is what motivates me to push and expect more from our government. Some may say that they are bringing experience to this post, but no one started this job with experience in it. It's time for a different vision, and I don't know where I'm at in a minute and a half, but I'm gonna stay right there.
Yeah, that's good. And I was remiss. Let me introduce Morgan Napolitano. Morgan is our timekeeper. She will hold up for the candidates a yellow card, which indicates 15 seconds to go, and red when time is up. Though if you're mid-sentence, please be brief, but finish your sentence. So next then is Kelly Cheadle.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Cheadle. I'm an artist, a small business owner, a community organizer, and the legislative aide for city council's East District. I believe that our elected officials have both the opportunity and the obligation to repair the harm of past policies, protect what matters, and prepare our communities for an uncertain future. I'm a Rochesterian by choice. I grew up in Rhode Island and came here to earn my design degree from RIT. My husband and I live in the Park Avenue neighborhood with three generations under one roof. We launched our business Aragami nearly 20 years ago at the Hungerford, and we're now based at Madon State in High Falls. As an artist and an organizer, I think differently, and I act strategically. I don't just see what's broken, I imagine what could be, and I work together with others to make it happen. I've already helped turn community energy into results by connecting people power to the levers of government. While we've made great strides fighting for housing justice, public power, and against the bid, time and again, we keep hitting the same wall, elected officials who aren't listening, or perhaps just aren't listening to us. Too many decisions are made without renters, working families, and everyday people in the room. And as a result, too many common sense solutions are delayed or denied. I'm running to break that cycle and to put our neighbors first. I want to help shape a future where no one gets left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Niner Davis.
Hi, everyone. My name is Niner Davis. I'm running for city council because I was born and raised here in the city of Rochester. Before graduating high school, I had moved 17 times and went to 14 different schools. So I understand the importance of stability for our city and families. I'm also a mother here in Rochester. I'm raising three beautiful children. So I understand the importance of community and our neighborhoods as well. And I'm really here today because of the opportunities and resources that Rochester has provided. I'm also a real estate broker, and I work every day. 70% of my clients are first-generation home buyers. And I'm also known well in my community and in my career for being a person of leadership and collaboration. I do believe that Rochester is resourceful, and it takes people who understand the people we're serving to make sure that we are focused on getting those resources to our communities and that we're going to push through no matter what. And I believe that the spirit of collaboration is important within our city government, and I feel like that is what I bring to our city government, is the spirit of collaboration and being a doer who just gets things done regardless of the circumstances. And I would love to earn your vote today.
Great, thank you. Clifford Florence, is Clifford here? I don't see him. So we'll go to Mitch Gruber.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. My name is Mitch Gruber. I'm an incumbent city council member where I chair the Finance Committee. I'm also a vice president at Foodlink, the regional food bank, where I've been for 16 years. Prior to that, I was a head start teacher here in the city of Rochester. I went from teaching pre-K back then to teaching college students about local government now, because I really do love to energize the next generation of civic leaders in Rochester. As a city council member, I've worked very hard to pass on-time budgets that are balanced, that are clear, that are transparent, and perhaps most important, that invest in critical infrastructure. Many other cities across the country took their American Recovery Plan Act dollars and spent them on pet projects and filled budget holes. We invested in replacing 80% of our water-led service lines. This is incredibly important work. The work of city council is not sexy. It's not about the things that you can say, it's about how deep you're willing to dive. I'll just share one quick example while I have the time. That our, to the west of us in Buffalo, they stopped fluoridating their water about five years ago. To the east of us in Albany, they don't fluoridate their water. We have the Kennedy HHS is trying to prevent cities from fluoridating their water. We need council members who are paying attention to things like that, to initiatives that are at the root of what makes city governments work, and I'm dedicated to doing that work and hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. LaShonda Leslie Smith.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I am LaShonda Leslie Smith, a native Rochesterian. I have, I am a licensed and clinically trained social worker, and I have been running nonprofits for the last couple of decades. Currently, I serve as the Executive Director of Connected Communities, where we lead neighborhood revitalization. I've been doing that for the last decade. Prior to that, I was the president and CEO of Young Women's College Prep Foundation. Before that, the Executive Director of CASA, Court Appointed Special Advocates. And prior to that, I founded at just 24-years-old, my own nonprofit, Successful Pathways, that serves teenage parents. And that's essentially how I got my start to service in this city. My entire life and career has been to service on to disenfranchise communities throughout the city of Rochester. I myself was a teen mom at the age of 14, but I've been able to beat those odds, fortunately for myself, graduating, earning a doctorate degree in social work. And I know what it takes to go from the bottom to the top. And I know that there are a lot of barriers that have been in place for residents who are starting off just like myself. And so I want to come to a seat, a city council, to serve the residents of the city as customers, because that's exactly what they are. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. Stanley Martin's next.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. My name is Stanley Martin. I'm also an incumbent council member. I'm a mental health counselor by trade and a community organizer. One of the things I'm proud of is co-founding the organization Free the People Rochester, a Black-led organization primarily focused on working-class issues and undoing harms that we see day-to-day in our communities. I have a master's in community mental health counseling from the University of Rochester, and I've worked as a therapist at our local correctional facility. I've led a state-funded recovery community center, primarily working to ensure that people utilize harm reduction and autonomous ways to care for themselves, to heal and to thrive. Currently, I work with our New York State Legislature on mental health policy. Been working on amending mental hygiene law to ensure that a mental health diagnosis is not a death sentence, and people who are living with a mental health diagnosis can receive care with dignity and live and thrive. A lot of my work is focused on human services. I'm always concerned about what's missing in a community. How do we heal a community? How do we care? How do we love each other? And as a policymaker, my primary focus has been using a person-centered collaborative governance approach to make sure that all the policies we pass are really grounded in care for our people. All my votes are really influenced by people who they will impact. And I'm running because I truly believe that in this time where our communities are under attack, immigrants and LGBTQIA communities are under attack, collaborators like myself are needed to keep our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Josie McClary.
Good evening, everyone. It is in the spirit of partnership and collaboration. I am happy to be here tonight. I am confident that the skills that I've developed over a 30-year career in government will enable me to be a strong and affectionate-
Josie, having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah. Uh-oh. My mic is all the way up.
Now you're good.
Okay, all right, okay. So can you start the clock over?
Yes, we'll start it over.
Thank you. It is in the spirit of partnership and collaboration that I am happy to be here tonight. I am confident that my skills that I developed over in a 30-year career in local government will enable me to be a strong, effective advocate for our community. I moved to Rochester 34 years ago to raise my family, and it's been home ever since. My children grew up here in the city and graduated from Rochester City School District, and now my grandchildren are doing the same. I currently live in the 19th Ward Community Association, the 19th Ward, and I am honored to have served as the past president of the 19th Ward Community Association. Serving the community has been my guiding force in my career. I served as an election inspector for 25 years. I also served as 25 years in the county clerk office, and now serving as the community engagement officer for the county executive Adam Bello. I am passionate about the health and wellness of our community. I serve in the Rochester Food Policy Council, Rochester Pharmacy Access Coalition, and on the board of the Reconnect Rochester and True Impact, which is a mentoring and tutoring organization. I am running for city council because I have seen firsthand the power of local government when they work together and to bring essential resources to the community and to make real positive changes. So thank you. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. And next, Miguel Melendez.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Miguel Melendez. I'm the current city council president, incumbent candidate for council member at large. I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for putting together this forum and allowing every candidate the opportunity to respond to questions. I'd also like to thank every candidate for running for office and for their time to make our city better. For me, I'm focused on safer neighborhoods, quality housing, and equitable access to opportunities for our residents, all three of which are priorities and core pillars of my record that I hope to talk with you all tonight about. As a Rochester native, husband and father of three, I have deep roots in this city. When I was nine years old, I lost my mother, and by the time I was 15, I lost my father as well. Those traumatic experiences shake me and my leadership deeply. I have thought deeply about who I am and what I hope to accomplish in life. And as a result, I've challenged myself, and I've been in leadership roles ever since. I started as a part-time community organizer at Iberro and worked my way up to the executive leadership team. I joined the council at the height of the global pandemic. I have been president of council since January 2022, and I have led through tumultuous, tumultuous moments and times. I've also become known in this community from my stable, steady, and consistent leadership. I do my best to listen to all voices, be considerate of the needs of diverse populations, and deliberate with my, deliberate with my community in mind. At a time when there is federal uncertainty, a local steady hand can make all the difference. And I hope to make sure that I do that as your representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michael Powell.
All right, thank you so much. I'm glad you got it right this time.
We try.
Yes, my name is Michael Powell. I'm a licensed master social worker. I'm a certified New York State Drug and Alcohol Counselor, and I'm the Executive Director of a reentry in Community Development Center. It's a nonprofit organization that I started in the 14605 neighborhood, one of our Portisip Co's in Rochester. I've been there for eight years doing the same work, working with men and women recently released from jail to prison or struggling with substance use disorder. One of the reasons why I'm running is because I see that Rochester has potential. I've been in Rochester all my life. I grew up in an area of the city that they call the fatal crescent, or the crescent of poverty. And the area that I grew up has not changed, and it's no better in the last 40-something years that I've been alive and been a part of that neighborhood. So I feel like Rochester could stand new leadership with bold vision to do something different, because clearly, things is not working. When you talk about downtown Rochester, we used to have one of the best Rochesters in a small city in America. Now you go downtown and there's nothing to do. All of our, some of our, most of our historic buildings is actually being renovated, not into something comparable or better, but into apartments. I just think that that's the wrong leadership if you want to grow the city or you want to grow downtown Rochester. The opioid epidemic is the least talked about, but we have people dying. Hundreds of people have overdoses per year and fatal overdoses. No one is talking about it. No one has any solutions for it. Crime is out of control, so I'm not one of the people to say that we're in a good space. I just think that we're not maximizing our potential. So I think that with me as a licensed social worker and someone that's already on the ground doing the work, I would be great to change the trajectory of the city of Rochester. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Sanchez.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Sanchez, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters, not just for putting this forum together, but also for doing the work that you do. When I became a citizen in 2018, the first person I saw was a volunteer from the League of Women Voters to register to vote. And I've been doing that and engage in citizen action ever since. I'm a proud Rochesterian transplant. I came to Rochester to attend RIT, where I graduated with a degree in civil engineering technology. And I decided to set roots in Rochester because I love this city. I fell in love with this community, and I made a very deliberate choice to make Rochester my home. And I've been working ever since to make sure that the residents of Rochester have a better quality of life, working for organizations like Reconnect Rochester, where I'm currently board president, as well as City with Community Land Trust, and Teaching Artist Rock, among many other organizations. I am running for office, not just because I love the city, but because I believe representation matters. As one of the only candidates that's running, that's a naturalized citizen, during this climate, I believe that representation is truly important. I'm also a member of the LGBTQ community and a community that's very much under attack on a regular basis. So having that voice on city council is extremely important. I have a lot of experience, and I believe to be a city council member, you should have experience in advocacy, as well as learning how to govern, and having, bringing up professional experience. I'm the only engineer that's running for city council. I believe we've never had an engineer running for city council, and that gives me a specific perspective that I can bring to this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Stewart.
Hi, folks. I want to, I want to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening. I'm a third-generation Christmas tree farmer with a triple bachelor's from the University of Buffalo. And I've spent the last five years working and building food systems here in Rochester. As the vice chair of 490 Farmers, I also supported more than 40 community gardens across the city and worked to create a food pharmacy program alongside Headwater Food Hub and Trillium Health. During that same amount of time, I had the great pleasure of working as a legislative aide for a city council member, where I was proud to work alongside and advocate for progressive legislation like Good Cause Eviction that helped keep our, our community safe. I worked on budget analysis, built relationships across this city, and got to know every single neighborhood in Rochester. I now work for the Police Accountability Board, and I'm proud to work in an institution that was created by this city and by the people who call it home. And I believe that my work ethic, dedication, and experience make me uniquely qualified to serve as our next city council member. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I see that Clifford Florence Jr. has now joined us. So Clifford, if you would introduce yourself, you have a minute and a half.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Clifford Florence Jr., running for city council at large. It's my first time running. I am a Rochester native. Chose to run for city council because we know fresh faces, fresh voices, fresh ideas, new blood. If anybody knows anything about my grandfather, he laid the foundation on what it takes to push for change. I'm not one to ride that coattail. I'm one to extend it. And the flavor that I would bring to city council is one that the people would respect and respond to.
Great, okay. Then thank you. And now we'll start with the question, what do you view as the most important issue for city council to address in the coming year? And how do you propose to address it? I'll jump down to Mitch Gruber and ask if you will start us off. And then we'll go alphabetical order from there.
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. I think the single most important thing that the city council will be asked to do is to update the zoning code. Zoning, again, is not necessarily the most flashy subject in city government, but this particular council that will be elected will be updating the zoning code for the first time in more than two decades. And an updated zoning code does a lot of things, but it is, in fact, an anti-poverty tool. It is a tool to create more homeownership. We, with a good zoning code, we have the opportunity to build more variety of homes quicker, faster, cheaper. Look around Rochester and tell me the last time you saw ranches, townhouses, co-ops, all sorts of different housing models that our zoning code right now simply just does not allow. And so it's time for us to redo the zoning code. It'll also ensure that our commercial corridors will have some more flexible opportunities to start new businesses, so we have less vacancies there. A new zoning code, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for a city council. I've laid the groundwork and want to be on council to see it through. Can I ask a question, Judge? The time for these questions, I just saw Morgan put the time up. It's 30 seconds?
No, it should be a minute and a half. Morgan, were you doing a minute and a half?
Oh, I apologize. I thought in the beginning you had said a minute, so I was doing a minute for it.
The only one that's a minute is that last round of summations. So you, you have another 30 seconds.
Yeah, I won't, I won't belabor the point. I'll just say that the new zoning code is something that this city, this upcoming city council will get to do, and it will have a transformational, it'll make a transformational difference in our city, even very small technical things. Right now, our city is behind in regulating Airbnbs and VRBOs and other short-term rentals. A new zoning code will do that work. It requires people who are going to comb through pages of text vigorously and have the patience and the diligence to do a good job on this. That has been my record as a city council from the start, and I hope to be able to bring it to the next level by helping adopt the new zoning code. Thank you.
And LaShonda Leslie Smith.
Just piggybacking on what Mitch said, I definitely do think that the zoning code is important. But just overall, there are so many issues that are happening simultaneously. I think it's very difficult to narrow in on what's the single most important things. When I think of our most pressing issue, because it is multifaceted, I think it's investing in our neighborhoods equitably, making sure that whatever investment we're doing is rooted in community voice. There are far too often our policies are made for neighborhoods instead of with our neighborhoods. And so I want to push for expanded community planning models, like what I've already helped to lead the Comprehensive Neighborhood Plan in the Emma and Beachwood neighborhood, ensuring that residents have a say in how their communities are designed. I also do think that it's important for us to establish a process of trust and transparency so that as we are reinvesting in these neighborhoods that have historically been disinvested, we are doing it from a lens that people can embrace and recognize that this is a service, not just for them, but a service that's being done with them.
Thank you. Stanley Martin.
So I think the most important issue that we should focus on addressing is the housing crisis we're experiencing. Without housing, it affects every part of your life. I'm also deeply saddened and quite frankly enraged by the lack of housing our children are experiencing. I've learned of so many kids now sleeping in their cars, unable to focus on school. So we need to address it using every solution available at our fingertips. Firstly, I think we need to rehabilitate our vacant, abandoned, single-family and multifamily units to be able to increase affordable housing stock. And then when we think about what affordability means, we should be looking at the city's area of median income, not the county's. So it's truly deep affordable housing. Additionally, we know that the city average income is low, so we need to be able to raise the living wage so that people who are working can afford to care for themselves and their families. Finally, guaranteed basic income. If people are able to have an extra income who are living the, living below the poverty line, they'll be able to afford safe, secure housing. All these solutions come from community. We were, we were able to pass Good Cause, a fight in which I led alongside Citywide Tenants Union and other community organizations. So I believe there are other policies similar, similar to Good Cause that we should be looking to, to enact to keep tenants safe and to also remove some red tape around what it means to have affordable housing.
Thank you. And Josie McClary.
So like, oh, my other colleagues have mentioned, I think, lack of access to resource. So if I get on city council, and I should say, when I get on city council, I would really like to bring access to resources and public safety on my issues. I want to be able to expand the outreach to underserved communities and bring the county and the city resources to the community in forms of events, workshops, public, you know, forums, and create hubs. Create the hubs in the county, in the city that, that can collaborate with the county and, and, and show the strength in that partnership and collaboration that could help many people. I think, and oftentimes, the county and the city, they separate themselves, and I think that we need to bridge that, bring the resources. I would love to see some expansion in some youth programs, employment programs, to focus and focus on health and access to food and, and just to really build up the neighborhood. We need to address the systemic issues. We need to address the systemic issues that we have in education and just really be able to collaborate and do what is best for the community and bring those essential needs into the community so all can thrive. And then we can all grow together and unify together. So getting on city council, I would just love to bring access to resources.
And Miguel Melendez.
Yes, thank you. I think the most important project, similarly to Councilman Gruber, is really the zoning alignment project, but specifically how it relates to housing in our city. And I'll I'll talk a little bit about why housing is so important right now. So we have a lot of opportunities to address the housing crisis. One, I think through the land bank, there's opportunities to utilize our land bank as a property management entity. And I've had this discussion with the administration and making sure that we create more opportunities through the land bank for homeownership. I think we also have to review the city auction process with respect to how the land bank may be a part of that process and control the housing stock and inventory that we do have, which is very limited, from going to outside investors and focus on how we get those properties into the hands of people who live here. In addition to that, I I think we've focused on different housing types. I think the zoning alignment project will open the door for different types. I do think modular homes are something we do have to look at. The cost is one-third to half in terms of what it costs to build a new construction project for a single-family unit. And I think under my leadership, we will be able to to get more creative in creating housing in the city. We also became a pro housing community, which opened the door for state funding here in the city of Rochester. I would like to take advantage of housing programs through the state. There's the AHO program, the Affordable Housing Opportunity Program, which will give us subsidies to build new single-family homes for first-time homebuyers and for people who are looking to buy in our city. I think we need to be creative. We can't build fast enough. And we need to look at we are where we are so we can achieve more density and and be thoughtful about where that density is. Can't be in every residential neighborhood. Some neighborhoods need to be single-family. Others can be a little bit more diverse. And my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Michael Powell.
You're doing good. You're doing good. I do have to be honest and say that it's very difficult to hear incumbents say what's important, answer this question when they have already been on council four, five, six, seven years. But if I had to pick, and as a social worker, you see that so many issues are in, it's intersectionality with a lot of issues. So it's difficult to narrow it down to one. But if I had to pick one issue that I think that, in my opinion, would be the most important, it would have to be the opioid epidemic. I believe that one of the things that we have to do right now is declare the opioid epidemic as a public health crisis. It's destroying our neighborhoods. So when you talk about housing, one of the things that people can't keep sustainable housing is due to addiction. So you know that there's constant housing instability when a person is struggling with addiction. If you look at some of our neighborhoods like Lyle Avenue, Hudson Avenue, Joseph Avenue, Monroe Avenue, all of these neighborhoods are being destroyed by the opioid epidemic and no one is talking about it. I cannot see for the life of me, how can you be an elected official, not even on city council, some of our Monroe County elected officials, from people from the mayor office, how could you ride down Lyle Avenue and see the condition of some of our city residents and not take it seriously? So I'm a licensed master social worker and a New York State certified drug and alcohol counselor. I work in a methadone clinic right now. So a lot of the people that you see on the highway or you see Lyle Avenue, some of those folks are on my caseload right now and I work with them every single day. So what I would like to do is for us to be able to provide more resources to grassroots organizations that's working with the addiction and opioid population. I do that now. The city of Rochester never funded my program, knowing that I work with people with addictions right now. So that's what I want to do. I want to get on city council, provide resources to people that's doing the work on the underground. So the opioid epidemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor Sanchez.
Yeah, so I I think that the most important issue that the city council is going to have to address is systemic poverty, especially under the threat of the Trump administration. We know that they're looking at cutting a lot of the support services that are really geared towards their more impoverished population. So looking at healthcare access, looking at food access, you know, how are we really going to support the the most vulnerable of the populations in our city? And I believe really, city council needs to step up and be able to bring a lot of these different agencies and different entities together to be able to ensure that we're able to provide that access that the people are really going to need, especially during the times that are to come. So partnering with like Food Link or other food providing services and making sure that we have markets at the spaces where people can access them. But also reducing the barriers to growing their own food and even community gardens. So right now, the city is not even going to be able, is not even giving full year term leases. And we know that growing food doesn't just happen in a seasonal time, but it's actually a full-year investment. So we can reduce a lot of the barriers that people are currently struggling with to be able to support themselves and making sure that we also provide the access to proper housing, taking a lot of the stock that we have currently, fixing it up to make sure that we can provide low-income housing and being able to make sure that people have the access to the the healthcare that they need.
Thank you. Kevin Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. My top priorities, I'm going to split into, the first is is basic needs, food, water and shelter. And I'm going to talk a bit about shelter in a moment, but food relief, hunger relief is is sort of my great passion. I've been working in the field for a number of years. We have eight zip codes in this city where a third of the people are struggling to put food on their table every night. This region also grows half the fruits and vegetables for the state of New York. So we have resources. We are growing food in this region. We're just, we need to be allocating it better. We need to be building relationships with local growers. We need to be establishing local grocery stores that are in people's neighborhoods and accessible from a transportation perspective and expanding community gardens, which I'm happy to to hear folks discussing. I've been working to build community gardens across the city for for five years. The other priority for me and maybe sort of the root of the issue is budget and allocation of resources. I was speaking with Evan Dawson a couple of weeks ago and and he said, don't tell me your priorities, show me your budget. This year, we're cutting community libraries by six percent. We're cutting rec centers by twenty-two percent. We're cutting youth services by twelve percent. And worst of all, we are cutting housing by ninety-one percent. We have an six hundred and eighty million dollar budget this year and we're spending less than one million dollars on housing. We have resources in this community. We just need to put them in places that matter to our community. Thank you.
Louis Sapanti.
Thank you for the question. And you know what? I got to tell everybody, thank you for your answer because I think everybody's right. Number one, and I don't know if you're ever going to hear this again, I agree with Mitch Gruber. You know, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, the zoning is going to resolve probably half of everybody else's first picks. You know, and they all fall under that category. To me, public safety and how we address public safety and how we deal with public safety, how we deal with mental illness, that is a priority for me. I know that I could, Stanley could beat that drum and a bunch of other people could beat this drum on how we're supposed to go. I just think we're handling it all wrong. No one's addressing it. And we're putting a boatload of money into public safety and we're not getting anything out of it. I think we have to do it different. I'm not saying the public safety, we don't need police. We do need police. But we need good police and we need the right police and we need them going to the right cause. If we want to talk about housing in community, look on the city's website, look up the Josanna Master Plan and it'll teach you how to do it. There's a step-by-step plan on how to make that work, you know? So we made it happen in Josanna. We did it by including the community, by including the neighborhoods, by including everybody that the city of Rochester is cutting out. So you know what? To me, everyone here, this is city council. This should be your new city council because you know what? We answered all the questions and we're able to work together. I think we're able to work together. And I think we can accomplish everything we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Cheeto.
So what if we understood that Rochester's biggest issue is a crisis of care? Because that's what the housing crisis really is. It's a failure to care for the people who make the city home. So it's it's bigger than housing. It's about how we care for our families at every stage of life, our children, our teens, our young parents, our elders. And our housing won't fix itself. And every day that we delay, the costs are going to grow. Right now, the city and the county spend sixty-five to seventy-five thousand dollars a year per person just to keep someone alive and unhoused. That's money spent managing a crisis and not solving it. We need comprehensive people-first approach that asks, what do our neighbors actually need to live with dignity and stability? One that recognizes not only that housing is a human right, but no one should have to work three jobs just to stay afloat. We need to address this crisis at each level with a people-centered approach. That means listening to community when they tell us that the rent is too damned high. That means listening to neighbors when they say that they need help fixing their roofs or to be able to age in place. And listening to our most vulnerable to provide low-barrier emergency shelter, not as a long-term alternative, but as a step towards stability. If we believe in community, then we have to listen and invest like we mean it, in housing and in care and in each other.
Thank you. Niner Davis.
Hey guys. Okay, so of course, there's a ton of important issues that I feel like we need to address in the first year. But one that I want to talk about specifically is going to be just the, we have a large extent of poverty in our communities, specifically cycles of generational poverty that continue to impact so many families. So as someone who grew up here in Rochester in poverty, I understand firsthand how it can affect every aspect of your life, such as housing, education, safety, opportunity. And that's why my focus is real solutions and not just temporary relief or, you know, selling you a dream while I'm on my campaign trail that like absolutely is not something that will be feasible. I believe we can do that by investing in affordable homeownership for first-generation homebuyers to provide long-term stability and generational wealth, expanding youth and employment and mentorship programs to kind of disrupt cycles that give young people a real stake in like their future and so they're able to actually control their future. Strengthen partnerships between city council, community-based organizations and local businesses to better align resources and close all the gaps that we have because we are resourceful. And there's just a gap between the people who need them and the people who have them. And then prioritize an accountability and equity in our budget decisions, ensuring that we put funding where it is going to have the most impact in neighborhoods that have been historically left behind as well. So that's what I believe and that's how I believe we can achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we complete this round with Clifford Florence.
The first thing I would address is housing, because if you give someone something that they can have joy and integrity about, you'll see the community change instantly. I'm a firm believer that we don't have to wait until it's election time to talk about the money that's already there allocated for these things. And that's one of the issues, why the city is the way that it is. We wait until election time to talk about the money that's already there to help these people. And it really comes down to the matter of fact of either you want to do it or you don't want to do it. We don't have to wait till election time. We don't have to wait until a high moment in the city to announce these things. We can just do it because it's just commonly right. You know, we don't try to have to try to send a ship to the moon. We don't have to do anything abstract. All we do have to do is work together to give people what we have every day, what we go home to every day, what we're sitting in right now. Our home's comfortable. Everybody deserves the right to have a comfortable place to live. Each and every day at my church, we get three-one-one calls from homelessness, 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 food, homelessness, food, homelessness. So as a up-and-coming potential city councilman, that would be one of the first things that I would address to get things done is housing. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that takes us to the second round and I'm going to explain it. But we will start, let me alert Michael Powell. We'll start with you on this round. So for our audience, the League of Women Voters solicited questions. We put those questions together and sent them to the candidates. Rather than have each of thirteen candidates answer the same question where we would probably get a lot of similarities in the answers, we're giving the candidates the option of which of those questions to answer. They will read their chosen question and then answer. They will have a minute and a half for this round. Well, again, we'll start with Michael Powell. Take it away.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate that. Let me see, I have the question. I'm gonna go with number seven. Let me just read it real fast. Question number seven, many residents struggle to afford household label as affordable. What initiatives would you support to create truly affordable housing options for low-income individuals and families? On the campaign trail, this is one of the things that we hear a lot. So the city of Rochester have been prioritizing, they talk about all this housing stuff that you've been hearing, but really they've been prioritizing luxury apartments and renovating houses into apartments. One of the things that is an issue with that is that a lot of the times, those apartment buildings, the most they go up to is one or two bedrooms. I've been speaking with families that has four children, five children, and they can't even do, no matter how affordable it is, they can't, they can't utilize those properties. And then some of those rents is for a studio, if you talk about South Union. Some of those rents is twelve hundred or fourteen hundred dollars for a studio apartment. My city, that's that's almost price gouging. So the city of Rochester have to be strong advocating against that. But a lot of the times, these developers are campaign donators. They support campaigns and 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 they don't get no pushback because they basically in the pocket of a lot of a lot of these politicians. So that's one of the reasons why I run it, to truly be an advocate and be a voice of the people that have been voiceless in this community for years. I would I would support some type of rent cap. I don't know how that looks. I don't know if it's possible, but I do know that people is unable to afford quality housing. We have so many new apartment units, but we don't see no change on unhoused people that's still on the street. I just feel like something not right and we need new voices, new leadership. So that's one of the things that I would do is I will focus heavily on the housing with the the all of the apartment developments and we need to prioritize homeownership and people's community. We know that lead to generational wealth. We know that homeownership take people out of poverty. Why do we keep on building so many apartment units? I just don't understand.
Thank you. And Victor Sanchez. Victor, yeah, great.
Sorry about that. Just having some technical difficulties. So I'm going to answer question two, which is how do you feel about Rochester's status as a sanctuary city? Are you in favor or not and why? And do you think the city needs to strengthen its status by passing legislation? So I am in full support of the sanctuary city policy. I, as a naturalized citizen myself, as an immigrant, I understand firsthand what it means to have fear that a routine police stop is going to lead to family separation. It's something that I grew up with as a child. So I understand that wholeheartedly. And that is why I do think that we need to strengthen our sanctuary policy. Our residents need to know that they are protected from police stops, that they are not going to be separated if there's a police stop and that they could actually call nine-one-one if there's an emergency or any issues. We can't have fear stop the actual safety of our residents. Rochester is also becoming a sanctuary for the LGBTQ community, especially the trans community. And we need to make sure that those folks that come here know that they are safe and protected. Our residents, our community is calling for a stronger sanctuary policy. And I wholeheartedly believe that we need to listen to them and pass something that's going to reassure their safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Stewart.
Thanks, Josh Morris. Just out of curiosity, do we think we'll have time for two selected questions or just one?
I think there's a chance that we'll have time for the for two selected, but I would pick your best just in case.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna I'm gonna start with the question about Good Cause Eviction. And it reads, the Good Cause Eviction law was passed recently. What steps will you take to ensure its effective implementation? And how will you address potential challenges from landlords and legal obstacles? I think that for me, this encapsulates a question about housing in general. And one of the things that upsets me most is I think it took us too long by far to pass Good Cause Eviction. I see it as common sense, basic protections for renters. It basically says you need any reason to deprive somebody of their human right of housing. I also spoke with a renter today, I was at I was at Doors before this debate, who did not know that Good Cause had passed. And the legislation was actually held up in city council specifically to implement an educational component of the legislation. And I I'm not seeing it in all of the areas that we need to be seeing it. So I think we need to expand the education and communication that's happening around Good Cause. But there are other housing elements that we need to be addressing as a city. The first is rent stabilization. The first step of this is what's called a vacancy study to assess the number of vacancies in our housing across the city. This legislation was passed by members of council last year. And I'm grateful for that. It's, it's one of the things that I applaud most from the folks that are on council currently. But that was a year ago and the administration has failed to act despite saying that it would take them a month to issue the RFP for that. And lastly, we've talked a little bit about area median income tonight or AMI. Much of our affordable housing is set at sixty percent of AMI, which is vastly above what many of our residents can pay. And the module housing, which I think is, is one viable solution, but is also impacted by AMI. At a nine county region level, we're setting it at eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income. This is more than our community members can afford. If we're going to get serious about affordable housing, we need to make sure it's affordable to everybody in Rochester. Thank you.
Louis Aponte.
Thank you, thank you. I'm almost gonna join two questions, thirteen and fourteen, but I want to say that what we're, what we're missing is a workforce development that starts in high school.
Let me, let me just ask you to read the question if you would.
I'm sorry. Let's go with fourteen. What initiatives would you support to enhance workforce development in the city? So, I am a product of co-ops that happened in high school. I'm an Edison Tech graduate and I'll tell you that the co-ops saved us. It put us in great paying jobs. I went right from high school into Eastman Kodak Company. Why? Because the co-op started in the eleventh grade. It taught us trades. I have friends that went to tool and die to bricklayers, to the tin workers, you know. When I got into EMS, I think I'm the only person that's running for council. I was president of the union or FCIU, Local Two Hundred, United, for a long time. Why? We pulled people that were going into health-like careers. They were too young to start certain careers and certainly do certain things. The basic thing is it's there. People have to take the initiative. And it comes by building partnerships. We need to speak to the school district. We need to speak to the schools. And there's a lot of Democrats that get, get supported by union shops. So we need to talk to these people to offer jobs to our students, to our residents, and to our community members. Because this is where the truth comes, where just put the rubber where it meets the road. And that is with jobs and workforce to vote. I'm good. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you. Kelly Cito.
Okay, I'm gonna answer number two. How do you feel about Rochester's status as a sanctuary city? Are you in favor or not and why? Do you think the city needs to strengthen its status by passing legislation? Immigration is a paperwork issue that has been weaponized by the Trump administration. He's empowered a motley crew cosplaying as federal agents to detain people without due process, tearing apart families and carrying out extrajudicial kidnappings. This does not make us safer. It makes us all targets. Now, ideally, our state representatives will pass the New York For All Act to create a united front against authoritarianism so that no one, no one city has to stand alone. But until then, we must do everything that we can do locally. I fully support Rochester's status as a sanctuary city, but it can't just be symbolic. Our policies must be strengthened and expanded to protect those most at risk, especially our queer and trans neighbors. In these strange and dangerous times, we need clear boundaries and stronger legislation, but also clear expectations. City leadership must ensure that the police and our staff know exactly which side of a barricade we expect them to stand on. To me, sanctuary is not just a policy, it's a commitment to show up and protect one another. Thank you.
Niner Davis.
Okay, so being that my background is in real estate, I'm gonna choose the housing question, which is many residents struggle to afford housing labeled as affordable. What initiatives would you support to create affordable housing options for low income individuals? And I do feel like they're oftentimes priced out of affordable housing because it's labeled as affordable, but it's not affordable compared to what they're actually earning. So to create truly affordable housing, I believe there's actual initiatives and actions we can take rather than just highlighting all the things wrong with it, such as tying affordability to actual neighborhood income levels, not just the median income, but so rents reflect actually what families are earning and are realistically able to afford. Investing in community land trusts. And increasing, of course, champion of homeownership, increasing our support for first generational home buyers through down payment assistance programs, financial literacy program, encouraging low interest lending because homeownership, I believe, is one of the most powerful tools for building stability. And then expanding rental assistance programs to prevent displacement and homelessness. And lastly, just require a deeper look into the affordability in the city funded housing projects, just ensuring that the developments that are receiving our support are serving the most in need. Thank you.
Clifford Florence.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to go with question. How should we address the mental health issue needs of Rochester residents, particularly in underserved communities? That's an easy fix. Some time ago, even before I set plans to run for city council, we had a meeting scheduled headlined by Minister Clifford Florence Senior, Mr. Howard Eagle. And the meeting was called Community Call For One Table. That's where all spokesmen, so to speak, from all these different backgrounds of drugs and this and that, so on and so forth. And it looked really good. The room was really full, but the results were really empty. And I always said if I had an opportunity to have a voice that would be heard, that would be something that I would do is call all of those people to the table again to see what are the results and what are your purpose and plans for having such a title, but no results. You know, people in this city, particularly on city council don't have somewhat of a backbone that they need to hold people accountable in a way in which people will respond in kind. You know, you see, as Michael said, a lot of people are being supported by filthy rich funders, as Minister Clifford Florence Senior says all the time, you know, filthy rich funders are lining these people's pockets. So the cellouts are us in the community who are being affected by these moves being made behind closed doors. So when you have these things being done and accountability is not being held in places that they should be, we get questions like this. And until we can truly get these questions answered, taken care of, with just the easy fix of just doing it, we'll always have these questions present.
Thank you. And Mitch Gruber.
Thanks. I'm gonna ask, answer a question about Vision Zero, which aims to eliminate traffic fatalities. What areas you think are most hazardous for pedestrians and cyclists? And what would you propose to enhance safety? Vision Zero is a commitment and a series of policy levers that I spearheaded last year specifically to eliminate traffic and pedestrian fatalities in Rochester using education, engineering, and enforcement, all as ways to be able to make sure that our roads are safer. The moment that we announced the Vision Zero platform, we were awarded twenty-three million dollars from the federal government to do safe streets and pedestrian crossways, improvements, enhancements, and we're in the middle of all that right now. Those are real policy solutions. We're going to reduce our speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour. Those are real policy solutions. They're on the books at rockvisionzero.com. You're welcome to look up all those things. I would just add that there's a lot of things been talked about tonight that are, that are important to hear about. It is not, it's not false that we have too much food insecurity in Rochester. We grow a lot of food in the region. There's no policy solution to address that. It's not false to say that GBI works. However, we're, we're looking at a federal government that's looking to cut three hundred billion dollars in SNAP benefits and trillions in Medicaid. We don't have a place to find the money to pay for programs like that. The question is what levers the city council have? And there are real levers, our zoning code, our ability to fluoridate our water, our Vision Zero commitment. These may not be the most sexy, attractive items for people, but they are what city government can do to improve people's lives. And I will go to the map, making sure that we use every lever that we have to make sure that we're making people safe and give them an opportunity to live a good, quality life in Rochester.
Great. Lesunda Leslie Smith.
Thank you. Because of my background in community development and urban planning, number eight, I was naturally drawn to that question. What strategies would you implement to support redlined neighborhoods? I believe that we must repair the harm with the same intentionality with which these neighborhoods were de-invested. That includes supporting community land trusts, funding home repairs. We have an extremely aging housing stock and not enough support to the residents who live in those homes. We need to create commercial corridors that support small businesses. And we need to fund place-based strategies that center resident voice. That's a drum that I will continue to beat. We've been, we've been able to see this be effectively done through the Beethwood and Emma Neighborhood Comprehensive Plan. From that, we've been able to leverage over sixty million dollars for housing and neighborhood investment. We've preserved nearly two hundred affordable housing units. We've reduced vacant lots from a hundred and forty-one when we first started, when we first did our parcel by parcel analysis in twenty nineteen to under forty vacant lots. Essentially, I believe that in order to dismantle redlining, the, the consequences of redlining, we need to work together to use our neighborhoods as economic ecosystems for breaking the cycle of intergenerational poverty. It is a multifaceted issue. It is about vacant lots. It is about the mental health crisis. It is about ensuring that there's economic mobility within neighborhoods. It's all of those things combined in order for us to really see true change at the neighborhood level. So thank you.
Thank you. Stanley Martin.
So I'm going to answer the question around the sanctuary city, whether I'm in favor of it or not, and whether I think the city needs to strengthen its status as a sanctuary city. So I, I do support Rochester being a sanctuary city. We all know about RPD collaborating with ICE to arrest and detain members of our community, which broke the existing sanctuary city resolution. In analyzing what happened there and in collaboration with community members who are immigrants, undocumented, people who represent the LGBTQIA community, I learned that there is more that could be done. And in fact, we can and should strengthen our sanctuary, sanctuary city policy. To that end, through collaborative governance, we just introduced a new sanctuary city ordinance, which makes it unlawful for RPD to work with ICE solely for the purposes of detaining community members based on their immigration status. Further, it expands protections to our LGBTQIA community members by making it unlawful to discriminate for sports, discriminate against them for, in using public bathrooms. All of this is directly in response to the moment we're in right now with the federal administration attacking diverse communities. And I think it's so important that we use our power as a council to protect our communities and make it unlawful, really codify these resolutions, make it law. Making it law also provides a pathway to take legal action if someone is discriminated against by the city employees or other entities that provide public accommodations in the city. So support for strengthening it, strengthening it, but also taking action to do exactly that.
Thank you. Josie McClary.
Okay, so I am gonna pick question number thirteen. What initiatives would you support to enhance workforce development in the city? So something that I would like to do on city council is put an emphasis on funding trade schools. While university education is wonderful, there are other ways that our residents can achieve success. We should be investing in these programs as, as well, and trade school is a way that we can do that. We can get youth and adults signed up in trade schools so they can develop skilled trades like carpentry, electrical, masonry, plumbing, and machinery. From there, our unions can enlist them and make them accessible to big contracted jobs. This will address the shortage in trade workers and provide the, and, and, and provide for the young people entering the workforce who know that the university just isn't for them. And additionally, I would like to put a program where you take those individuals that and work, and so they can work with developers and unions to transform vacant properties into working, safe, and affordable housing. For me, this is the only way that we can keep steady work to our local trades and building unions, but it will also increase the supply of low income housing as a whole. So thank you.
And last on this round is Miguel Melendez.
Yes, thank you. So I'll be answering question number four. The actions of the Trump administration endanger the welfare of many groups of people, both via, via budget cuts and incursions on constitutional rights. How should the city of Rochester respond? So for me, the city of Rochester should respond and just and fight, and we are. The current fight is through litigation, advocacy, and collaboration. We need leaders that will come together and fight together to address the federal administration, not fight each other. In another term, I'll do just that. I will work with my council colleagues to ensure we refocus our advocacy and energy to ensure the citizens of Rochester are prepared for what may come. The federal administration has already announced that there is an interest in removing community development block grant dollars, CDBG dollars. For our city, that would be thirteen million dollars in support, which, which actually employs about fifty people, affects fifty people in city government. It affects our roof repair programs, community based activities. We also could lose infrastructure funds. In addition, there's Medicaid, Medicare, Head Start funding, SNAP benefits. The list goes on and on and it's horrendous. So not only are we under attack from a funding perspective, our ideology is under attack and there is a lack of due process. I am the only person on this call named in my official capacity in a federal lawsuit from the Trump administration for standing up for what is right. I will tell the public I am not scared. We will not let the federal government commandeer local resources and we are within our constitutional rights to stand on our sanctuary city policy. There is currently a policy, an upgrade to that policy in committee. And we have pending litigation. We will be taking up that conversation soon. I'm currently at the Rock Community Roundtable at the Urban League, working with the community to understand, unpack, and address federal concerns and the impact of the executive orders. I have met with our congressman. I'm working with the mayor on the Rock Resilience Roundtable, which we're working to provide legal support to our community and communication strategies to the general public on what is happening, how it impacts our residents. We must defend our community, but we also must go on offense. I'm here for both.
Great. Thank you. Here's what we're gonna do for the next round. We will do another round of questions, but everybody will have one minute, not a minute and a half to answer. So I'll begin with Niner Davis. Take it away.
Hey, I'm gonna go with that last question. What changes and additions would you propose and advocate for to ensure that the community voices are heard and incorporated into city council decisions? So I believe that to ensure that they're heard and reflected in our decisions, we need to go beyond public commitment periods such as the actual council meetings. And I think we could be more neighborhood focused by encouraging neighborhood based decision making, creating community advisory councils where in each district that regularly meet with council members to help shape the priorities of each district. Maybe engaging in accessible engagement. So hosting regular sessions and listening events in community spaces, which is similar to what I do at real estate and what I do in my community involvement work anyways, is bringing ourselves to the people where they're at, maybe even considering offering childcare or interpretation services and virtual participation options as well, so we can eliminate the barriers that prevent people from being there and then transparency and follow up, making sure that we require reporting on how resident input was influenced, has influenced our decisions.
Next, Clifford Florence Junior.
I go with one that's very personal to me. It says, what do you view as the most important issue for city? Excuse me, I said, how would you ensure that community voices are heard and incorporated into the city council decisions? Quite frankly, the mayor doesn't want to hear from anybody. City council really doesn't want to hear from anybody. I've been to the city hall previously, seven or eight times to come down to be heard. And to do, give him credit, city council president, Melendez, who currently sits there, he did at least hear me out to some degree. But when I went to try to talk to the mayor, he wouldn't hear me out. He put me out of city hall seven or eight times, I believe. It was in fact when I had to pay him a visit peacefully at his home to get him to respond to me, to get a meeting with him, and it shouldn't take that. I don't know how you can want to sit down and fight the government when you won't even sit down with somebody in your city to hear their point of views, even if you don't agree with them, even if you don't like them. But a conversation needs to be had with respect to all walks of life. So how I would incorporate the voices of the people is to simply open the door. You know, just open the door and let them know that they are welcome in a place where they pay taxes. Simple.
Okay, Mitch Gruber.
Yes, I'm gonna answer question twelve. What are your plans for promoting environmental sustainability and addressing the effects of climate change at the city level? Climate change is obviously an existential threat, not just for Rochester, but for people across the world. Um, climate change is obviously an existential threat, uh, not just for Rochester, but for people across the world. Um, I passed legislation a few months ago uh to study geo, putting geothermal in the inner loop when we have that whole uh section carved up. Um, I recently worked with the administration to release an R F P to put solar on the Blue Cross Arena, which is the single largest uh municipal uh facility that we have to do solar on. I helped to start the Rock City Campos Program and I'm working right now on expanding it. These are, again, uh, maybe small to some, but tactical, specific things that city government can and will continue to do to make life better for people, to reduce our emissions, to hopefully bring down the cost of energy. Uh, and I'm committed to doing that, as well as my single biggest plan for uh my third term when it comes to infrastructure is making significant investments in the public market, which is the jewel of our city in so many ways, and has infrastructure that desperately needs to be brought into the twenty-first century. Uh, we're secured a bunch of that money in the C I P budget right now and look forward to bringing it home to fruition, so we have the mark, a market we can all be proud of and live for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Lashondale Leslie Smith.
Uh, question number three. What can we in Monroe County do to address racial inequities and food insecurities? Uh, I believe we must treat food access as a public health and racial equity issue. That includes city support for local grocery co-ops, black and brown-owned food enterprises, and ensuring that city-funded programs source uh from local farms. I also do think that we could be doing more at our rec centers, uh, teaching our youth through uh the development of raised beds, teaching them how to grow food, building uh self-sufficiency and all kinds of other skills, as well as uh addressing some community health needs at the same time. I also do believe that it's important for us to figure out how to um get the people who are in the city of Rochester to the public market as well. I think it is an underutilized resource um for people who live in, right in and around um, the public market and it has access to low-cost, fresh foods. And so I'd love to uh continue to brainstorm around that as well.
Stanley Martin is next.
Yes, I will answer the question about making R G and E a public utility, uh, whether I support it or not, um, and positives around that. So, I'm, I fully support uh making R G and E a public utility. And in order to do that, there are steps that have to be taken. The first is doing uh a feasibility study. Um, I worked with my colleagues on council to pass legislation allocating five hundred thousand dollars to fund uh a portion of the study um contingent upon the county. Uh, the county said no. However, I don't believe that that should be a reason why we shouldn't move forward with the study. Uh, because uh city residents are primarily impacted by the harms of R G and E, um, freight hikes, incorrect billing, uh, poor customer service. I believe that we should listen to our community when they say we should find a way to make the study happen. That's something within our purview, and I am the only incumbent who is uh supporting the city moving forward with the study on our own. I think as a city, we need to be taking bold action. We need to be listening to residents. Um, and that's one of the ways uh I think we can, really studying the feasibility and working to make R G and E a municipally-owned entity.
Thank you. And Josie McClary.
Okay, so I'm gonna pick question ten. Um, what, it says Vision Zero aims to eliminate traffic fa- fatalities. What areas do you think are more hazardous for pedestrians and cyclists, and what would you propose to enhance safety? So this is personal and dear to me. Um, two years ago, on June twenty-third, um, my grandson's best friend was hit and killed on Thurston Road. Um, he was hit um by a uh box truck um while he was crossing the street. On the other side of the street, it was his mother and he was crossing the street with his sister. So, I, Thurston Road is a very high-traffic area. So immediately, the community gathered and we was able to collect enough um signatures, and we petitioned to get traffic safety measures on Thurston Road. Today, we have a crosswalk with rapid beacon lights, and so it's not a, a fix-all. But again, I think with um Vision Zero, we definitely need to um support and enhance um traffic safety measures. Um, the previous administration underneath Lovely Warren, they had a pace car campaign. I most recently brought that back underneath the current administration, along with Reconnect Rochester and Monroe County, so we can go into schools and, and teach kids the importance of speeding and, and driving um safely. Um, because again, we, we need safety, um, traffic safety measures, whether you're walking, riding a bike, or driving a car. I mean, it's part of public safety, and again, when you talk about public safety, it's not just law enforcement. We really need to really enhance our traffic safety. So, thank you.
Miguel Melendez.
Yes, thank you. I'll be answering question number fourteen. What initiatives would you support to enhance workforce, workforce development in the city? So people in our city need access to opportunities, and we have a local income problem. I believe in continuing and expanding on our workforce development partnerships and programs. We have programs that train and prepare people to get into the architectural engineering fields through the Re-Job Program. As a council member, I also started an initiative called Rock the Block Community Employment Fairs and focus on creating connections to employment in neighborhoods. Uh, the tagline is food, music, and jobs. We create access in a block party-style fair uh where we have music, food, uh, the opportunity to break the ice. Um, I also helped uh push for the new workforce development mobile unit, which will be going neighborhood by neighborhood across the city now, uh, providing access to free Wi-Fi, laptops to help people with resumes, and preparing them for future jobs uh for themselves. I also believe we have to fix the pipeline between our residents and the available opportunities in our region. We should not be recruiting from outside the city of Rochester for a Rochester job. We need Rochester residents to take local jobs. In addition, according to the Building Trades, the average tradesperson is fifty-five years old. In the next ten years, most of those individuals will retire. We have to build the critical workforce to take those jobs, and it has to be Rochester residents. I'm committed to working on that, cuz I'm doing it now. Thank you.
And uh, Michael Power.
Yes, I'm gonna answer um question number eight. Let me just see if I got it up still. Yes. So question number eight is neighborhoods affected by historical redlining still face investment disparities. What strategies would you implement to foster well-being in these areas? Uh, so one of the things that I've done myself, anything that I see as an issue, as a social work, I feel obligated to address it. Uh, so I come from the Sio Street neighborhood. So in twenty-twenty-one, I started the Sio Street Homes and Business Development Project, where we was organizing as a um, as a community uh to ask the city of Rochester to invest five to seven million dollars into our neighborhood before they fill in the inner loop. Um, Sio Street is a historically marginalized, oppressed neighborhood, and it was, it was the neighborhood that I referenced when I said this referred to as the fatal crescent or the crescent of poverty. Uh, our biggest challenges was whenever we went to um elected officials, the mayor office or city council, uh, we was getting them, uh, having a very hard time for them seeing the value of investing in a neighborhood like that. And that was uh almost five years ago, and that's, that neighborhood has still um seen no investment. Uh, so it's an ongoing uh issue. One of the things that I would wanna do on city council is use the seat as leverage to teach other neighborhoods, similar to mine's, how to advocate and organize for themselves. I will personally use my social work skills to go directly to these communities, uh, create organizations or even organizations that, neighborhood associations that's existing, and show them how to organize and advocate, and then redress the um local government um for investments in their community. Uh, because that's one of the challenges that we face. I talked, real quick, I talked to a, a voter today uh that was telling me that she's not voting. They gave up on the system, so they, they need um encouragement and they need support.
Thank you. Uh, Victor Sanchez.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna answer the question about promoting um environmental sustainability and addressing the effects of climate change. Uh, so one of the leading uh causes of greenhouse gases in our region is transportation. So investing in public transportation and making sure that that is actually something that is being utilized, and looking for other options like light rail is gonna help us in reducing our uh carbon footprint. Uh, we also need to invest in uh new updated building codes and housing codes. So we're building this new housing. Is it actually going to be uh built to a new sustainability standard that we need for the resiliency of our changing climate? One of the projects that I worked on in college was actually taking a Habitat for Humanity house and redesigning it so that it uses passive heating and cooling. So we need to look at new ways of how are we designing our infrastructure and updating our building code to make sure that it matches for the changing, uh, changing climate. Looking at uh renewable sources like solar and geothermal, uh, as was mentioned, is also really important. Thank you.
Okay, and Kevin Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer the uh R G and E and public utility study, but first I, I just want a quick rebuttal. Um, when it comes to food security and it being a question of policy, you know, we see things like the Double Up Program uh, the public market that doubles the amount of money folks get for their uh public benefits that was funded by the city of Rochester. Uh, we see things like the zoning alignment project that make urban agriculture and large-scale greenhouses possible. Uh, we see the permit process that currently in the city uh for vacant land use makes it even impossible for Cornell Cooperative Extension to get a long-term uh and stable permit. Uh, and lastly, you know, we're seeing the city of Rochester destroying community guards across the city. So there's a number of ways that policy factors into this. But uh, when it comes to the public utility, it's something that every voter I've talked to adores, is concerned about. R G and E has been plaguing this community, uh, and it's not just an, an economic question or representative democracy question. It's also an environmental one. Um, you know, this is a, we're currently managed by a for-profit company that has no interest in green energy production unless it is financially viable. With a public utility, which is what the city is demanding, and which we do have the uh resources to fund this couple stages of the feasibility study, we can create a public utility that will allow us to truly at scale address the climate crisis with the urgency it deserves. Thank you.
Yes, and Louis Aponting.
Right when I stuck a Tic Tac in my mouth. That's okay. I'm gonna do number eleven. How should we address the mental health needs of Rochester residents, particularly underserved communities? Well, let me tell you. When it comes to mental health, uh, I'm just gonna bring some history back to some people that probably weren't even born. Um, before, there used to be a building at the corner of Plymouth and Main Street, ninety-five West Main, called the Pillars, which housed over a hundred people with mental illness. The city wanted it for parking, for parking, uh, to put a parking lot in, so they moved them out to Monroe Community Hospital and created a hundred beds out there, which now sits empty. All the, I, I think half of the people on this screen right now are mental health specialists at one level or another. And there's a bunch out there that are looking for work. So why aren't we using our partnership with the city and the county and using a building that's already set up for that? We're not doing that. We're not doing that at all. You know, ninety-five West Main was moved to Monroe Community Hospital two decades ago, and it's never been used again. It sits idle, empty, and we're still paying for it as county taxpayers. Morgan, what I done? Okay, I'm sorry.
Great. And Kelly Cito.
Okay, so I'm going to address, what are your plans for promoting environmental sustainability and addressing the effects of climate change at the city level? I'm probably gonna echo some of the uh thoughts from Victor Sanchez, so thank you. Uh, with so many urgent issues on our plate, climate change often gets pushed to the back, but that's not sustainable. The truth is, it's already affecting us, from shifting weather patterns to increasing flooding risks, risks, and soon, a growing population as climate migrants seek safer places to live. Rochester must be ready, not just to respond, but to adapt and to lead. That means preparing our infrastructure, potentially updating building codes to address different types of severe weather, and expanding local disaster response, because we can't count on FEMA to show up and save us. We also need to plan for growth in a way that strengthens our housing system and protects our most valuable, or our most vulnerable, and I would say valuable neighbors. Um, at the same time, we can be part of the solution. Rochester has strong industrial roots and innovative minds. We should be using them to transition to public power, invest in clean energy, and build a more resilient, self-sufficient city. Climate change isn't tomorrow's problem. It's here, and we need bold action locally now. Thank you.
Thank you. For this last part, we'll go reverse alphabetical order. This is your la- chance to wrap up, summarize why your candidacy uh should be one, should earn one of the votes that uh the electorate has. So, we start with Kevin Stewart.
Now, the school lunch line was never reverse alphabetical order. I will say that. Um, you know, I, I hope to earn folks' vote uh this evening and, and across this campaign, because I think I bring a combination of uh technical experience and understanding, as I hope I've demonstrated with uh talking about the budget and the fact that we're slashing uh youth services, our centers, housing services, uh, as well as a work ethic and a boots-on-the-ground approach um, that I, I hope is demonstrated through my work, both as a uh urban agriculturist um, and as someone who, you know, was proud to work alongside some of the folks on this call at the uh street redesign with Reconnect Rochester. And I, I still have finger, dirt under my fingers uh from that event, because I don't just talk about these things. I, I work at them. Uh, and I hope to earn everybody's vote this evening, but I hope everyone also knows that whether I win or lose this election, I will be working in this community alongside folks who are in the greatest amount of need, and I look forward to working with everybody who's listening tonight. Thank you.
Victor Sanchez.
Yes, uh, thank you for the time. Um, you know, I, I think I bring experience in advocacy, governance, and building policy, as well as a professional experience as an engineer that would really lend a really uh diverse uh perspective to this role. Uh, I am the only person here that's helping to lead a community land trust, which has been mentioned a couple of times. I was around the table with a bunch of advocates that helped together the Vision Zero Plan, and was at the table to present to the mayor and city council, which has also been mentioned several times. So I know what it means to build policy together, how to bring people together to push forward in that, that policy and those ideas. Uh, and I hope that I can bring that uh experience and that perspective to city council. Thank you.
Michael Power.
I thank you again so much for having me, Michael Power. I'm asking for your vote for one of five seats. Um, I know you hear my tone tonight, and that's, that's nothing but passion, because I know what's going on. Uh, we have five candidates that's running on the so-called mayor slate. Um, these folks is running for uh power and control, and I'm running for the power and the voice of the people. Uh, we don't have time to play political games while people is um dying. Uh, people can't find housing downtown Rochester. It's a residential neighborhood. Um, they, they assembled the mayor's slate to push out um Stanley Martin and Kim Smith before they knew she wasn't running. Uh, so I'm running, man, to, to, to be one of these candidates that can restore um city council so that we can make Rochester the greatest place in, in, um, in America to live. Vote Michael Power. Thank you.
Miguel Melendez.
Yes, once again, thank you, League of Women Voters and Rochester residents for your support. I appreciate my neighbors across the city who make our city great. I don't view the city with rose-colored glasses. I know we have challenges. I know we continue to improve. We can continue to improve our city government, and I believe we need stability. I believe I provide you, the voting public, with that stability that I'm talking about. I will focus on safer neighborhoods, quality housing, and access to opportunities for our residents. I will commit to supporting the two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-plus residents of our city, not just people I know, but everyone. I have proven that already. I'm a listener. Please visit my website to learn more, melendezforcouncil.com. You can also find me on Facebook, at Melendez for Council, and Instagram. Thank you so much.
Next, Josie McClary.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So I um just wanna address that I am running for city council because I want to make positive change in this city. Um, I've been employed with Monroe County for thirty years, and, and as I mentioned, as the outgoing president of the Nineteenth Ward Community Association, I touch every corner of this city and county. I understand the, the issues that the, the city is facing, and I collaborated with many um of the community-based organizations. So as a county employee, I understand the importance of building that gap and building that relationship with the city and to bring resources so we can help. Um, as I mentioned earlier, is, is, is to help as many people as positive. I truly believe if we can heal together, we can thrive together. And we all on this panel have worked hard to get to where we are. I'm not here to throw shade at anyone. At the end of the day, like um Kevin Stewart says, whether I get the seat or not, my job is Monroe County Chief Community and Engagement Officer. I will be out there in the community, doing the work, boots on the ground, and servicing the cities of, the city of, of Rochester in the best of my ability. So, I hope I can gain your support, and you can reach me at McClaryforRochester.com. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Stanley Martin's next.
Yeah, thank you to all those who are running. It is so hard to run for office, and I know everyone is doing this because we care about this community. I've worked with many of you all here. I've worked with many of you all here today and a lot of folks in this community know me through my work in mental health and substance use recovery. Uh, some know me as a policymaker who worked on good cause, worked to, uh, pass, uh, uh, the vacancy study, uh, legislation. Or some folks know me from working on Danielle's Law, bringing communities across New York State together to amend our New York State Mental Hygiene Law. Um, I am a doer. I'm someone that folks call when they are happy, when they are sad, when they have a new idea. Um, I'm just really grateful to have led, uh, over the last three-point-five years, uh, with integrity, with courage and with a deep love for this community. Over the next few years, we know what bold leadership looks like. I am a bold leader. I'm not afraid to speak truths of power. Um, and I'm tactical, strategic, uh, a collaborator who can really do what it takes to keep our communities whole, safe and able to thrive.
Thank you. LaShonda Leslie Smith.
Uh, thank you so much. I think that was, um, very well said, Stanley and Josie. Um, for one, I'm not a career politician. I'm a lifelong Rochester resident, a mom, a licensed and clinically trained social worker and someone who has walked with this community through struggle and transformation. I've led real train, change from reducing vacant lots and preserving affordable housing to bringing in millions for neighborhood revitalization, starting from the bottom. Now I'm here. I've done the work, not from a distance, but side by side with neighbors. And I'm running to bring that same hands-on, people-centered, people-first leadership to City Hall. I lead with heart and I move with integrity. And I don't just show up, but I stay until the job is done. I do believe that together we can build a Rochester where no one is left behind. And so I thank you in advance for your vote and you can find me at lashondaleslesmith.com. Thank you.
Mitch Gruber.
Thank you, Barbara, Karen, Morgan, everyone watching at home. Appreciate the time tonight. Uh, I am running for office again because I'm raising kids here. I have a five-year-old and a two-year-old. Uh, I will serve this community as well as I can each and every day. I've been, again, I've been at Food Bank for sixteen years, feeding the community each and every day. Um, that's the work that I'm passionate about. And at the end of the day, I firmly believe that we are in the middle of a massive, uh, crisis of trust in government. We're in the middle of a massive crisis in terms of the way our government is trying to attack cities like ours, blue cities and blue states. And I firmly believe that we need people on city council who have experience, who understand how government works, who understand how budgets look. And by the way, we are not cutting libraries and youth services. We are blocking federal ARPA dollars. Uh, those things matter and getting the job done matters. And I think I have a track record to prove it, both in my, uh, professional job at Food Bank and my time at city council. I hope to have your support, Mitchforrochester.com. And most importantly, whether you vote for me or someone else, please vote. Let's get turnout number high. Everyone go out and vote, early vote, vote on election day, whatever it takes, just vote. Thank you.
And, uh, Clifford Florence.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I appreciate everybody, uh, for the invite, uh, great feedback. Um, I'm a first time, I'm a first-time runner. This is my first time running. I don't sit on anybody's slate because I'm not into, uh, the favors. I'm not into you scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. Uh, I don't, uh, look for favors. I don't look for, um, any handouts. I just wanna show common people that you can do, you know, common things. This is, uh, isn't, um, something that anybody can, um, not do. You know, people, uh, want this position, you know, they wanna, uh, have a voice, but when they get into the seat, um, you know, nothing changes. You know, we have people who have, um, shared and had this opportunity for several years, but we haven't, uh, moved the mark, you know, as a first-timer. You know, that's what I wanna do. I wanna move the mark. I want to, uh, show people that we can get instant wins. We don't have to have, um, big, 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 big blast of meetings and things of that nature, just to move the needle to show people that things can, uh, get done. You know, I'm number three on the ballot and I hope to get everybody's support. I hope to get, uh, all the people out to vote because only, uh, ten percent of Rochester comes out to vote. Uh, and that's not a big number because we have a bigger voice than that in Rochester. And that percentage shouldn't be the voice of the entire city. So I encourage people to come out, uh, and vote and I, um, uh, appreciate everybody. Thank you so much.
Next is Niner Davis.
Hi, at first I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity. Um, and I'm running for Rochester City Council because I believe I truly do reflect Rochester, right? I was born and raised here. Um, not only have I walked these blocks while campaigning, but I've actually lived in almost every neighborhood of our city. Um, I've witnessed the weight of poverty, um, and I've seen the effects it has on our neighborhoods. Um, and despite that, and in spite of that, uh, it's driven me to become a mother, a homeowner, a business owner, an investor, um, and even a community advocate. And I do that for free, right? This is not something that we do, I do because I want recognition, but I do work closely with our community and our grassroots organizations because that is something that I'm passionate about because without the opportunities that Rochester has afforded me, I would not be sitting in front of you. I'm running also for city council to ensure that equity and opportunity, uh, are priorities in our decision-making. Uh, this isn't about politics for me. I'm not a politician. Um, it's about people. I believe it's about creating a city where everyone in every zip code feels like they're being heard because this is an at-large seat. So we need to be considering all of our neighborhoods and everyone that we're gonna be representing and that we also need to be able to collaborate with each other. So building teams that agree that no matter what, we will work together to get what is done, get things done for our community. Thank you.
Kelly Cheadle.
So to those of you who have hung in there with us for the last hour and a half, thank you. We need more folks like you to be engaged. You deserve leaders who lead with creativity, care and a deep commitment to community. I'll bring the same hands-on, people-first approach that I've used as an artist, an organizer, a mom of four incredible young adults and public servant to city council. I'm ready to work together with my council colleagues and with you to solve problems, protect what matters and plan for our future. You get to vote for up to five candidates for city council. I hope that me, Kelly Cheadle, will be one of them. You can visit voteforKelly.com to learn more, to get involved and help shape a Rochester where everyone has a voice and a place. Thank you.
Finally, Louisa Ponte.
You saved the best for last, Judge. You saved the best for last. You know, let me start by saying, you know, um, I think that Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Gruber have to have it out because if we slow cars down to twenty-five miles per hour, those gases are gonna go up. Okay, so, but secondly, let's talk about OD, like Mr. Powell said. Okay, I can tell you our organization just in the city of Rochester, if for twenty-twenty-four responded to over one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five overdoses in the city of Rochester alone. Okay, we, we respond to over a hundred and seventy home, calls for the homeless a week. And that's a week. These are numbers that matter. People need to have these discussions and really let's fill the room with people that can make changes and can, can create change. I can tell you, we could talk all the fluff that we want, but if it's not getting done, it's not getting done. People wanna reach me, I'll go to your house, five-eight-five-two-nine-eight-twelve-eleven. That's my phone number. That's my cell phone. You call me right now, it is gonna ring. People need to stop lying and really have to be honest on what's happening in the city. Thank you.
Thank you all. What a great evening. The voters in the city of Rochester are lucky. They have, uh, many candidates to choose from who really care about this community and have important talents to help the city move forward. Uh, the, uh, uh, the encouragement to vote, I echo that. Hopefully everybody will get out and vote. Primary day is, it's June twenty-fourth. Am I correct on that? And the polls are open, uh, and, uh, we'll get more information as I turn it back to Barbara Gresh, who is president of League of Women Voters. Let me ask everybody to, uh, mute all of the candidates and our timekeeper and myself to, uh, turn off our videos and mute ourselves. And, uh, Barbara Gresh, president, take it away.
Hi, thank you, Karen, and thank you to all these candidates. You know, we try to organize these debates for every election and sometimes the candidates wanna debate and sometimes they don't. And we had such a good turnout and it was really interesting. All right, so let's have some election news and I'm gonna share my screen for a minute, uh, to give you the facts. So, uh, if you're not registered to vote, you can still register until June fourteenth. Unfortunately, if you're registered but not registered as a Democrat, uh, you're still not gonna be able to vote. But you could go ahead and change your registration so that next year you can vote in the primary. Uh, early voting starts on that same day, June fourteenth. So on that day alone, you could, if you're not registered to vote, you could go and register and vote at the same time at any early voting, uh, spot. Uh, election day is June twenty-fourth. The polls are open, six AM to nine PM. And we thank the poll workers who make that happen. That's a tough job. Uh, if you're not sure if you're registered as a Democrat, you can check at the county website. Uh, if you're, um, not sure where your polling place is, that's the best place to check. Uh, if you wanna learn about other candidates, such as maybe for school board, uh, you can go to voteforoneone.org. That's our, um, online voting, uh, voter's guide. And we've had great participation this time around. So there's a lot of information there, also for the mayoral candidates. Um, if you wanna contact the league, you can do it by email or, uh, at this phone number and those are both on our website, which is LWV hyphen RMA dot org. And so, once again, I'm gonna thank everyone. Uh, I saw that we had a good turnout and that people stayed way to the end, which doesn't always happen. And that says a lot of good things about, uh, the content of the, the speakers tonight. So I commend you. Uh, this has been recorded and it will be posted on our YouTube station. Uh, we will send a link to everyone who's registered to vote. Uh, we often get more people watching it afterwards than, uh, we're able to make it in person. So do share the link around. I think it's a great resource for voters. And with that, I'll say good night.